Hi, good evening everyone. My name is Robert Tatro. I am the Chair of the Auburn Zoning Board and I am calling this meeting to order. Good evening everyone and welcome to Thursday, June 26, 2025, 6:00 PM edition of the Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals. Before I begin, I have some script I have to read and then we'll get started with the meeting. So, good evening everyone, I call this meeting to order at June 26th. I'd like to welcome everyone to today's meeting of the zoning board of appeals and thank you for all attending. Please note that the meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. Is there anyone here recording this evening? Hearing none, seeing none? You can record, by the way, you just have to declare it. Before we proceed, let me remind everyone to ensure that the meeting runs smoothly and efficiently and respectfully, only one person may speak at a time. Each speaker must be recognized by the Chair before proceeding and speak from the lectern, please. And we'll also adhere to our established agenda as best as we can this evening. In the interest of time, we will limit each speaker's comments to two minutes. If necessary, we can extend it, but we'd like to keep it to two minutes. Please be concise and avoid repetition of points already made by others. If a point has been covered, we kindly ask that you refrain from repeating it to ensure that we allow everyone a chance to contribute. Okay, so, do I have a motion to open the meeting?
Mr. Chairman, motion to open the meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, seeing none. Okay, so we have a 6 o'clock PM hearing this evening. Applicant J. Jill Development requesting a special permit under Section 3.2.2.2 of the Auburn zoning bylaw to construct four attached townhouses with a parking area at 24 Central Street, Auburn, Mass., map 41, lot 115. Now, just for the record, we completed this hearing last month, but there was a couple of deadlines and some tactical, oh, excuse me, administrative issues that came up with the permit. So, once they started talking about it and they realized, they consulted with the town attorney, they felt the best way to handle it to make sure, because there was a couple of dates that were changed, would just be to vacate it and then redo it very quickly while we're here and then we can move forward from there. So, is that understood from everyone? We're okay with that?
Gotcha.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, this was on the hearings last month?
Correct.
Yep.
This was, we approved this last month. There was a deadline with the clerk's office that became questionable one at a time, but was received and there was some paperwork issues on either end of it. So, we kind of made it a wash because there was some on the town side, some on the applicant side, and felt if we just do the hearing over, it would negate any other future questions.
I appreciate it, Mr. Chairman, I just, what makes me nervous is that I can't remember last month's hearing.
That's understood.
I believe everything that you're saying. It wasn't out long ago. So, thank you very much.
Okay. You approved. Okay, so, are we all clear on what we're doing with this one? Okay, so my first motion, if I could, please, would be, could I get a motion on the floor to vacate and strike the previous hearing regarding this particular application?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to vacate and strike. The previous decision on the hearing is stated.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, seeing none. Okay. So again, I've already read through your process, sir. I do apologize for the issues that may have come up, but if you'd like to go ahead and go through your proposal again and then we'll go through it and get you done.
I'm not prepared for that, but...
Can you speak into the mic, please, sir?
24 Central Street, it meets all the towns bylaws, plenty of frontage, looking to use, put a four-unit building, plenty of parking, and I believe I submitted a plan with the application previously and that's, it's pretty cut and dry. I'm not looking for any special, special variances or anything like that, just I needed to come in front of your board and granted permission.
Okay. Do we have any butters that would like to speak on this particular hearing? Okay, hearing none, seeing none? Do I have any questions or concerns from the board?
Not a concern, Mr. Chairman, but if I may, not to belabor it, but I just want to confirm on the record that there are no substantive changes to what you proposed last time to this.
Nothing. Right. This is a clerk law on our side.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cussy?
I have nothing.
Thank you. Ryan?
I'm good.
Thank you. You want to go through the battery of questions again or no?
No, I think I did that last time, so...
You did. Did a great job. I was kind of hoping really hearing it again, but...
I'm sure I probably did. No, I'm good, I'm good, surprisingly.
Okay. I have no other questions, so do I have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
Mr. Chairman, motion to close.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion on the 6:00 PM applicant J. Jill Development requesting a special permit under Section 3.2.2.2 of the Auburn zoning bylaw to construct four attached townhouses with a parking area at 24 Central Street, Auburn, Mass., map 41, lot 115?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, we'll prove it standard conditions.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we'll just, for the purpose of this one, we'll do a roll call vote. Vice Chairman, Aaron?
I approve.
Mr. Cussy?
Approve.
Mr. Garrett Bedian?
Approve.
Ms. Roach?
Approve.
And I vote to approve. Thank you very much, I appreciate your patience, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Good luck with your project. Do I have a motion to close the 6:00 PM hearing?
Mr. Chairman, motion to close.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. All right, we actually might have completed a hearing in five minutes. I think that's probably the first time that I've been on this board that we've actually stuck to the timeframe. Okay, so, we'll let them clear out a minute, they have a little chat to do. 6:05 PM applicant Dennis and Barbara Walsh requesting a special permit under Section 3.9.5.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for a temporary fruit and produce stand located at 87 Southwood Street, map 12, parcel 145. Do I have a motion to open the hearing?
Mr. Chairman, motion to open.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is the applicant present? Hi, folks, could you come to the microphone? Introduce yourselves. And let us know what you're trying to accomplish this evening. Thank you, welcome.
Well, thank you, yes.
Again, introduce yourself.
My name is Dennis Walsh, this is my wife Barbara. We have been in the produce business a long time and thought that Auburn might be a nice location to open one of our stands. We have already gone through some of the, most of the paperwork and so forth and we understood that the zoning board, we needed a special approval and that's why we're here.
Okay, and just for the record, this is going to be in Chieftain's Package Store parking lot, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just want to keep the, keep the audience interested in this as well. And can you tell me about your experience in the produce business?
Been doing it thirty-something years, I forget because I'm old, but roughly that. We have stands in other towns, we've been in Charlton where we live eighteen or twenty years, we have a stand in Sturbridge, we have another stand in Webster, and we had a stand down in Westley, Rhode Island for eighteen years, going into Miskomiket Beach. The person that owned the land decided to expand his building, so that's the only reason that we left, there wasn't room for us. And we're looking to replace that stand here in Auburn.
Okay.
We go to farms every single day with different trucks, out to Hadley and other places and bringing fresh vegetables daily.
Okay. Do I have any butters here this evening that would like to speak on this hearing? Mr. Largess, yes, sir, would you like to, that's okay. Concerned citizen, I think we can extend to that.
I think this is great, I hope the board approves it, but I would also like to inform you that on Thursday nights, the town has concerts on the common and they're always looking for somewhere to sell produce and stuff up there as well.
Yeah, we're aware of that.
Okay.
But, yeah.
I think it's great, board, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mic's open, got your chance. Okay, to the board, Vice Chairman, Aaron?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, where exactly are you going to put this?
It's next, we drew up, there is a site plan. It's a ten-by-twenty-foot tent, it'll go along the, I don't know how to explain it, the building's like here, it'll go on the, on the right-hand side of the building, in the parking lot near, on the side where the car washes.
Car washes. So, in between, the building would be in between the building and the car wash?
Yeah, there's just, we measured it out, there's enough room for park, for us not to interfere with Chieftain's, there's door that they need to go in and out of, and enough room for parking also, so.
Are you renting this? You don't own the land.
No, we don't, no, we're renting.
We're going to rent, yes.
And is it going to be a permanent structure that you put up?
A permanent structure? No, it's a ten-by-twenty tent and we are routed there by Labor Day because all our help goes back to school.
So, you're going to put this up for the summer?
Yes.
Yes.
And then it'll stay up for the summer?
And then, yep, it'll stay up for the summer and then at Labor Day weekend, probably, everything goes away.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so I can just, want to add to the board, I think, I picture this as the one, if you remember, there was one down on Route 20 in Halligan's parking lot, that was pretty popular a couple of years ago that I think we lost at one point. But, Mr. Cussy, any comments from you, sir?
Yeah, just signage, what are you going to put out for signage?
We have a temporary sign, we've already discussed it with this gentleman, I can't remember your name, I'm sorry.
Gary.
We have an A-frame, a three-by-four-foot A-frame sign, but it's portable, we put it up during the day, take it down at night, and he said that that was okay.
Mr. Garrett Bedian?
I'm all set.
Ms. Roach?
Just, I just wanted to note, for anyone who doesn't have the packets and information that we have, it's the planned, proposed business hours are seven days a week, it's eight-thirty in the morning till six o'clock at night.
Correct.
Just again, for public information, although these are available on the town website, are you cash only or do you take debit cards?
Debit and credit, we take credit cards.
That's for my own personal question, if you don't mind, just asking, just so I know.
Yes, we do.
Do you have bags or do we need to bring our own?
We have bags, but it would be nice if you brought your own.
Awesome. No, I have no further questions, I obviously think it's great.
Okay, last call, any butters here? Hearing none, seeing none? Okay, one though, do I have any concerns on the town side, Board of Health, everybody okay with that? Okay, I'm getting a nod affirmative from the back of the room from that, so we're good. Okay, so we also have one, requesting a waiver of the $300 filing fee for a temporary farm stand to be located at Chieftain Lickens. Do we have any information on that? Is there a reason for that one?
It was just, oh.
Yeah, we discussed it. Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. Tom knows. Um, yeah, it was just a discussion when they came into the Board of Health and everything, as far as, because they paid for the advertising for all the other stuff for the Board of Health stuff and we recommended that they ask for a request for a waiver, because they are given in some instances, I understand.
Okay, on the town side, do we have any concerns on that? I think we have talked, discussed this before, there's a cost associated with giving some of these fees back, correct?
I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. Thank you very much. So, because of the timing on this, I think that was part of the discussion, it's already the end of June and I think these folks are, by the time they get up and running, you're talking two months.
Oh, I see.
So, that's really up to the board. There is a cost associated in our office, but we also recognize it was brought up by the applicant and to be considered by the board, this really, it's up to you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so, do we have any discussion on that?
If I can just follow up, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Fallon, did we, as a town, did we advise them to ask for a waiver or did they come forward with it and ask themselves?
It was discussed, I guess it was discussed when they had like their DCG meeting and different things, and when they put their application together and they asked about it, I said, "Well, you should make a written request because it has to be in writing," I believe.
It was kind of mutual. It was mutual, I mean, we didn't offer that, hey, you should ask for...
No, no.
I just want to be sure, we're not advising applicants to think and get a discount?
No, not at all.
No, I guess it came up because we've never had to pay these kind of fees in any of the towns and we've been doing this for twenty years. It just seemed...
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I, for one, love the fact that they asked for this, because I, you just don't know if you don't ask. But I also appreciate what's been said, I mean, they've got, they've got a short run here with when they can, they can move product.
Yeah, with two weeks, if, if that.
I personally, I would be in favor of it because I just love the fact that they asked for it.
Okay, do we have any other discussion on that?
All in favor, right? Short season.
Okay, so, your thoughts?
I just wanted to make one note that we also do have something in writing from the gentleman who does own the actual property, that he has agreed to rent them the space or let them use the space, just because I know there was a question about, do you own it? And they said they don't, but the person who does own it did submit something in writing saying they have no problem with them doing it out there.
Thank you for that, I did actually notice that after, right?
No worries.
Okay. So, now that we've heard all of that, I think we could probably lump it into a decision then, right? They could be combined.
Sure.
So, do I have a motion on the 6:05 PM applicant Dennis and, oh, wait, let me, do I have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
Motion to close, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so do we have a motion on the 6:05 PM applicant Dennis and Barbara Walsh requesting a special permit under Section 3.9.5.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for a temporary fruit and produce stand located at 87 Southwood Street, map 12, parcel 145?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion or approve with standard conditions. I would add to that, that I would make a motion to grant the request for a waiver of the fee.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, let's do a roll call vote, Vice Chairman, Aaron?
I approve.
Mr. Cussy?
Approve.
Mr. Garrett Bedian?
Approve, but I just want to make a statement real quick. I think we should amend it just so that we give them through Labor Day. If you're looking at our bylaw, it says not to exceed sixty days and I think that's going to be weird timing, I think.
So, do you want to add a condition of keeping it to Labor Day?
Yeah, just extending it slightly beyond the sixty-day period that our bylaws, I don't, I don't know.
No, yeah, I think that's a valid point. There's some discussion that we want to go seventy-five days, just in case, what if they're pumpkins? I'm just thinking ahead, right? You never know.
Yeah, no, I'm, Mr. Chairman, I'm absolutely comfortable with that. I wouldn't want to restrict the timing where they could be fruitful, no pun intended.
Maybe give them ninety days.
I'm in favor of whatever the board decides they're comfortable with.
If I can find the help to stay, I'd love to stay ninety days.
All right.
As long as...
Want to give them a ninety-day permit, start even today?
Sure, we'll add the condition to Mr. Maron's motion that they be allowed a time length of ninety days.
No, I would agree with that, Mr. Chairman. So, I amend my motion to extend and add the condition that the permit's issued for ninety days.
Got it, okay, so we have a standard condition, permit, fees waived, we'll give them ninety days from today.
I agree.
Those are all of our conditions in this, is that agreed upon?
That is agreed.
All right, so we'll start our vote over again, Vice Chairman, Aaron?
I approve.
Mr. Cussy?
Approve.
Mr. Garrett Bedian?
Approve.
I vote to approve, good luck, folks, thank you very much in coming town.
Thank you so much for all your help.
Looking forward to coming down and getting some veggies from you.
I hope we see all of you.
And also, we will sign your decision this evening, by the way, so you can get started right away. All right? You can call the town hall, I'm sure?
It still has to go downstairs to the town.
Right, has to get stamped in by the clerk and they'll give your, give your call.
Very good.
Thank you so much, great, welcome. Do I have a motion to close the 6:05 PM hearing?
Mr. Chairman, motion to close.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll let them clear out for a second and we'll get to number three here, we're doing pretty good. Okay. They left quietly, I'm glad to hear that. So, we have a next one, is our 6:10 PM applicant, Philadelphia Sign requesting a sign permit under Section 7.6 and 12.10 of the Auburn zoning bylaw at 368 Southwood Street, Auburn, Mass., map 33, parcel 81, the motion to open the hearing.
Mr. Chairman, motion opens.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, seeing none?
Good evening.
Good evening. If you'd like to give us an overview of what you're trying to accomplish this evening?
Sure.
We gave you a sign at the last meeting, I believe, correct?
Not me.
No. No, that was Planet Fitness.
Planet Fitness, yep.
This is the belt chase.
This is the new page.
Same address, it's the same address.
Oh.
Same address, yeah, you're right.
I was not here, I was not here. For the record, my name is Heather Dudko, twenty-seven, Old Meeting House Road in Auburn, Mass., and I'm a sign permit consultant working with Philadelphia Sign who is the installer for Chase. So, summary of the proposal, we did apply for signage in April, assuming incorrectly that we needed to adhere to the LB zoning regulations for signage and then upon review of the application, were notified that we did need to adhere to the Drury Square Village District regulations, which is more restrictive than the LB. So, we were encouraged to apply for a special permit for the signage, so that's why we're before the board tonight. A summary of the signage for the bank, as I'm sure everyone in town has seen it go up, they are proposing two wall signs, each thirty-seven square foot, one sign will face Southwood Street, which is the main entrance, and one sign will face Swanson Ave. They're internally illuminated channel letters, flush mounted to the building. They are also proposing a ground sign on Southwood Street, twenty-nine square foot, twelve-foot overall height, that's also internally illuminated, the background will be opaque and only the lettering shows through that sign. That sign is proposed at twelve-point-one setback from the traveled way, so we believe it meets the setback. And we believe it meets the size of a ground sign that's allowed in that district, I'm not a hundred percent, but I'm, I think I'm correct about that. Internal illumination is restricted in the Drury Square Village area, so we are requesting the special permit for the internal illumination and the size of the wall signs. As you know, this is a new tenant to Auburn, it's a new building, there are several businesses around the area that have internally illuminated signs, larger than allowed by the district, so we feel it's in keeping with what's in the area. There is a brief in the packet that details the signage and how it adheres to and does not adhere to the regulations in that district, and we did address each criteria in the summary about the conditions of the land and it not being adverse to the neighborhood, having no substantial impact on town services or educational services or the school district, it will assist with the overall traffic flow. Since it's a new business, it's going to be a very congested, I think, tight kind of in and out there, so they just want to have appropriate signage, visually appropriate to direct the new customers into the driveway there. They will also have a drive-through ATM. The business itself is open, just regular business hours like nine to five, but they will have a twenty-four-hour drive-through ATM in the back of the building. That's pretty much what I have.
Do we have any butters here this evening that would like to speak on this hearing? Hearing none, seeing none? Vice Chairman, are you, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the board, I just want to, this is noted as a DSVD?
Am I reading that correctly?
Hold on. As far as the zoning district?
Drury Square Village District.
Drury Square, yeah.
Mall District, correct.
Which is really restricted. So, they need to... Assuming it's relief that you're looking for in illumination of the signs?
The illumination of the signs and the size of the wall signs.
So, the illumination's going to be twenty-four-seven?
It does not have to be twenty-four-seven, if there's restrictions on that. But in the, in the Village District, only sixteen square foot is allowed for a wall sign and we're asking for, what did I say? Thirty-seven.
Thank you. Yeah, you said you missed the setback on the road sign?
We meet the setback on the road sign.
Oh, you meet?
We do, yes. Yep.
Mr. Garrett Bedian, sir?
I'm all set.
Ms. Roach?
So, you have me on the wall signs, but you didn't sell me on the double-faced illuminated pylon, so that's the one I want to talk about. I agree that it's a new business, although everyone in town is talking about it. You know, my problem with these type of signs, we did the same thing when we did the car place on Route 20, is like, does it block the flow of traffic? It certainly helps people to note, to understand where the location is, but realistically, when you're sitting in your car and you're trying to turn out of there, does it block your view? That it's right next to the high school, there's a lot of kids walking, so you meet the setback, so it's going to be twelve feet, and I just figured out, I've been looking at the plan since you got up there to figure out exactly where it was going to be, and I believe it's labeled on the first plan as GW1.
Correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and then, would you say I was correct in assuming, like, right next to that, where that existing, that's going to be in and out? Is that what's planned?
Yes, yeah, yep.
Okay, okay. So, I guess in theory, if you're in that area coming out to turn...
Yep.
The sign is behind you, is, I mean, it's twelve feet back from the road, so your car is here, the sign is probably blocking the guy behind you, but it's not blocking you as the first person to turn right.
Correct, to turn right, correct, correct.
Okay. Okay, um, okay, yeah, I just, that's something I want to talk about on the record, because I do think it's going to be a little congested there, at least until everybody figures out what's going on.
Until it gets familiar, correct, I would agree.
Yep, okay. All right, then I'm all set for now.
Okay.
Thank you.
I do see your point, bringing that up too, and I can picture, as you were describing that, I was picturing myself sitting there, waiting to pull out, going left to right, and you said twelve feet back from that curb.
Right, how big is your car? You have a huge?
My pickup truck would definitely, it would be behind my truck for sure.
Right, so, and most people don't have a car bigger than yours.
Yeah, so that, that's what I mean, so going left to right, it's not going to really interfere based on that positioning, I would see.
Sure.
You'd have at least a car length, if not more, between the sign and its current location and the, where you have to actually start to pull out on Route 12.
Right, the car's behind you, might have a problem, but key car in front looking to turn, okay.
And honestly, can I just say too, like, coming down Route 12, south, I guess you'd be traveling, if I was to take a right there, I think that would be pretty well, I think you kind of point you in that direction, if you will.
Yeah, I think if, with the sign there, and you'll see the one on the building as Yeah, I think if, with the sign there and you'll see the one on the building as well, like me in the high school on the right.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, yes, yeah, okay. Yeah, that's fine. I just wanted to have an open discussion about the placement. I know it meets the setback, but sometimes the setback doesn't meet the reality of what is happening when somebody is pulling out of there.
You know, there's a couple of places in town where I pull up and I try to, you have to inch forward.
Right, right, right.
It's only a sign, sometimes it's over a crosswalk. You know, or sometimes because they have a bush in their front.
A bush, yeah.
You can't see the stop sign. So that's what we try to be careful of, you know, especially on Route 12.
Yep.
I'll go around one more time.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I appreciate that being brought up. Why the standing sign? I mean, it's a smart building and, and it looks good there for what's going up. But why, why the need for the sign?
I think they, they're probably trying to capture, if you're coming from Drury Square, to capture the entrance in because you'd probably see that before you see the parallel wall sign on the building.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that. If you're coming from Drury Square, that sort of indicates this is the entrance.
And if you're coming from Ocean State Job Lot or whatever that is now, you'll see, you'll clearly see the sign on Swanson elevation. And then you'll know that you need to go past the building a little bit and then turn into the left.
Swanson, yes, but I would cha-, I mean respectfully, I would challenge if you're coming from Drury Square and you're going by the school, all that, and in the spring, all that overgrowth is going to block that sign uh, on the other side of the fence. So if it's for signage coming from Drury Square to let people know it's there, I can see the argument, but, okay.
And I think those two columns, when you pull out of the high school parking lot too.
Yeah.
You know, and the fence there. So I think the, I think the freestanding one, although I know in, in the past, we've kind of opposed those, I think this is kind of a smart solution in that particular location.
It's past the entrance, right? So I think Mr. Maron's right, before the entrance, there is definitely some overgrowth there for the fence with the high school parking lot. There's a tree, but it's technically, it's past the entrance. So, you know, I think it does kind of catch your eye a little bit before that. Front of that building is sort of at a little bit of a weird angle. And we certainly don't want people like blowing by and stopping. I mean, you, you want people to know where the entrance is. I mean, you will have access if you, if you go into what we all call the Shaw's parking lot, if you've lived here for long enough.
If you go around.
You can go around.
You have to go past and take a right and then go in.
Right, and you can get in through the back way, of course. But-
If you're in the know in Auburn.
Yeah, if you know.
Yeah, great. And not to belabor it, but you're only going to do that once in your lifetime and then you're going to know it's there.
Correct.
You're going to swing around into the Shaw's parking lot.
Yeah.
And then you're going to loop back around.
The next time, you're going to know.
So it's only going to happen once.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I, I get it. I mean, it's, it's a marketing piece.
Right.
But from a safety perspective, I mean, I challenge whether or not they really need it.
Okay.
And are we allowing left, left-hand turns out of there?
I was just going to ask that. It's so funny, Rich, you say that.
I don't, I don't think that there's a sign there. I mean, I, I frequent, I, my kids were in high school there, so I don't think there's a sign that says no left turns.
Yeah, so there's none, but the school does. The way the school wraps it.
Oh, you're right, yeah.
Turn it, but the school did that by design based on their exit there. And you still catch a scallywag that does it once in a while. But, um, but that, but, and, and I will, I will admit that I take lifts out of there. Well, I used to until you destroyed the parking lot. Yes. But, um, no, fair, but that, but I, fair. I mean, I just, I just think that that makes it, I understand the goal of putting that there.
And picture it with somebody coming down Route 12 and there's four feet of snowbanks on either side. And they're not sure where that bank is either. And, you know, this, you know how, that, that parking lot can be a little treacherous at the edges when they'll pile up there.
You're, you're not wrong.
That's another good way to see it, you know, I think.
You're not wrong, yeah.
But we gotta, we can't just think of the green, we gotta think of the white too, unfortunately.
Yeah. You're not wrong. I just, I just think it's, it's a lot to put in that corner. You've got drive-through, you've got sign, and you've got narrow two-way road. It's, it's a lot to put in there. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
You're welcome. Anybody else?
I'm good, I mean, it meets the setback, so.
Yeah, I'd agree.
Like Meg hit said, you can pull forward and, you know, it's not going to obstruct your view when you're trying to pull out, especially taking a left out of there, that's, that's brutal. But, um, you know, meeting setbacks, I guess you'll be beyond the sign, so you'll get a good look.
Exactly. Anyone else?
Yeah, just a quick question. So I noticed that the BO1 sign additionally has a raceway for 24-inch letter set.
Yep.
I can't see what that actually is on any of these designs. Could you just explain what that is, since it's only that one and not the BO2 sign that has it?
All right, let me look at that. So they install a, let us say install, they, they kind of install a raceway. I do have installation drawings, but I don't know if I have it readily available. They kind of install a raceway behind the parapet. And then they attach the sign. The sign is flush to the building, but it's attached to the raceway that's behind the parapet.
Thank you, I just, I was confused since only one of the two signs had it. So I just figured to clarify it.
Right.
Yep, okay.
Uh, any further discussion?
Ms. Chairman, it appears to be under butter.
Go ahead, sir.
Stalages.
Danny Stalages, 39 Prairie Place. I'm looking at the photos from there. And there obviously is a Shaw's sign with the, the old Bed Bath & Beyond sign. There's no possibility you could put the bank sign above that illuminated. Because, uh, probably 100 feet to the south of that is the Bank of America sign. So if you're going to have it, wouldn't it be economical just to put another sign on top of Shaw's and on top of the, the Planet Fitness sign?
Unless the landlord's not giving that option or however they purchased the land from.
I, I don't know if that's an option.
I don't either, that's what I mean. So I think this is probably the option for the bankers. They generally build these, they build packages. And if you've been paying attention to the media at all, like, I mean, I just happened to see this, that Chase is building, I believe it's 50 branches in New England in the next five years, if not even that. And they're doing it in particular communities they're targeting, and Auburn is one of the first. So I think that's kind of interesting. They, I think they're investing in the town for a purpose, so.
I didn't know if it'd make it easier on, on you folks.
Right, yeah, I, I don't know if there's actually been an option on that, but thank you. Anyone else?
I'm good.
Do I have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
Ms. Chairman, motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, any discussion?
For me, Mr. Chairman, I, I actually agree with Ms. Roach's opening comments. I'm, I'm fine with the wall signs, I think that makes sense. I don't like the standing sign. I don't think it's needed. I mean, I'm not about to tell them their business or whether it's needed or not. I think, I, a better way to state it is I think it's, it, it's already congesting an area that they want to do a lot of things in there. They want an in-and-out, they want a drive-through, and they want to stink a, sink a sign there. I don't think it's needed.
Okay, Mr. Cussy?
One thing I can say is the, uh, the building is very close to the road. So you, you can kind of see the building, I would think, coming down the road. From Mike's point, you know, with the sign. Maybe it could be eliminated and, uh, it's just the wall signs.
Okay. Mr. Garbidi, oh, I'm sorry, are you finished?
Just, just the thought, that's.
Okay, yeah, that's what we're here for, to discuss, so.
The one thing I'll say to that point is, um, living on Pack Hill, I'm, I obviously go down Selfridge Street South a lot of the times. And I don't think you would see the wall sign really until you hit the high school. So I, I think there's definitely a need, uh, for the freestanding sign to get that Selfridge Street self-traffic.
Ms. Roach?
Look at the can of worms I opened, huh? So I guess ironically enough, being the person who brought it up, I am kind of sold on it now. I, I just wanted to have a discussion about where it is, where it's placed, what happens when a car is there. I do agree with Mr. Maron that there can be some vegetation there, there can be some. Um, and I think if that sign was before the entrance, I think it would be covered. But because it's after the entrance, I think it will help to dictate that this is the driveway, you know, similar to all the car dealership signs that we do, although those are usually ginormous. But their, their, their discussion is always, we want people to know how to get in. That is a major concern. How do you get in is, is the major concern, I think. So I think I've, um, I think I can live with it now.
Yeah, we don't need confusion in front of it.
No, I mean, there's a library entrance, there's, you know, there is a lot of stuff going on there. I think this was a good project, I am happy that we did it. But I think that it, it, it actually behooves everyone for that really kind of to be the main entrance and keep them from swinging around and then the shell. And so I think the more people we point to that entrance, probably the better that we are. So I think that's kind of the, the tilt of it, I do think is a little odd. So you don't really get it kind of front coming on. And then as far as the, like the wall signs, I have no problem with that. I think we should discuss illumination, uh, whether or not we want to allow that 24/7. But I'm kind of sold on the pylon sign now.
So my only comments on it is, I think that, you know, everything has been covered, but, and if you look on the plan here, it's going to be in 12 feet of a grass lawn, it looks like, right? That's, I see on the rendition here, the green is represented by finished lawn that will be kept manicured, I'm assuming. So, you know, I mean, it's actually going to be 12 feet into their grass.
Yeah.
And I, again, I see it, like you said, there is that big tree that kind of like will hang over and it will get pretty full.
It's like right there.
Yeah, exactly, that big tree right there. But I think if you come down Selfridge Street, it gives you the advantage of seeing it and making your decision, I think a few feet earlier and safer, rather than have somebody jack on the brakes.
Correct, that's what I'm thinking.
My, my concern is you're going to have two or three cars stacked at that traffic light. You're going to be able to drive by it, but somebody not knowing what they're doing is going to jack on their brakes to make a quick left. And then you're going to have a stack up at that, you know, you're going to have-
They really have very little faith in the driver zone.
I drive in this town every day.
I mean, I, I think, I, I don't, I don't disagree. My argument is that, that, that it's, um, it's going to be covered up, um, a good portion of the year by all that, that overgrowth. So it's not going to accomplish what they're looking for.
But look, the, the sign is here, the overgrowth is here, there's a whole driveway here in between. So I mean, unless that tree grows to cover the whole entire driveway, which if it does, we're coming for you guys.
Being on the opposite side of the driveway.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree. If it was here at the beginning of the entrance, I think they have a problem. But putting it over here, I think, makes it a little bit, a little bit better.
The location does make it.
And I think we do need to talk about illumination. I mean, in this area, I personally think it's okay to illuminate 24/7. There's no houses, it's not, but I do think that we have to talk about it. Because sometimes we do restrict a business, like we say, business hours. But I think we should put in there whether or not we're going to allow illumination anytime or we're going to restrict the hours.
I would even go one further for you and suggest that maybe that the selectmen even, or we have a discussion with both boards and say, maybe for this particular overlay area of the mall district, we should establish them so it's kind of a standard in there. Because it is the Drury Square Overlay District, we have the Mall Overlay District. We can standardize, I, standardize all of them that way.
Yeah.
By having some further discussion down the road.
Sure, and right now they need permission to illuminate.
I don't have an issue with illumination. And I, and I, again, I think it's the area.
24/7, you don't think, yeah, I agree.
I don't think it affects anything.
Right.
Um, we're not encroaching on anybody's home. Um, in that area, it's all business. I think it would actually-
It helps people know the location, frankly, I think.
Lighting on the road, it might help
Yeah.
all the way around.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I'm good with it.
So do I have a motion on the, I think we've covered it pretty well. Do you agree? Are you all satisfied before I move forward? Okay. So, um, 6:10 PM applicant, Philadelphia sign requesting a sign permit under section 7.6 and 12.10 of the Auburn zoning bylaw at 368 Selfridge Street, Auburn, Mass., map 33, parcel 81. Do I have a motion?
Ms. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion to approve. I'm not going to stick on any conditions. Um, I'm going to make a motion to approve as stated with standard conditions.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? None, hearing none, seeing none, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
They'll be very happy.
Contact the, uh, Department of Inspection Services and they'll provide you with the rest of the paperwork you'll need. Good luck and welcome to town.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, um, we're doing pretty good here. Does anyone need a break? Want a five-minute recess?
We could certainly do that.
Okay, uh, do I have a motion for a five-minute recess?
Make a motion for a five-minute recess.
All in fa-, uh, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, five-minute recess, folks, we'll get these other ones. Okay, we are back. Do I have a motion to come out of recess?
Chairman, motion to come out of recess.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, so we have a 6:15 PM applicant, a Mr. Steve Moss, requesting a special permit under section 3.9.1.2 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for a home occupancy at 420 South Street, Auburn, Mass., map 82, parcel 7. Do I have a motion to open the hearing?
Ms. Chairman, motion to open the hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, uh, Mr. Cussy is going to be recusing himself from this as, I believe, because you are a close by resident?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. So just for the record, it will be the four of us, myself. So I think it's also important to understand that when we make a decision, this is going to require what they call a, uh, supermajority. So you would have to have three of us vote in favor. It wouldn't be a two-to-two, obviously, because that would end up a split vote. So just so you know, you got to get a three-to-one out of this. So, um, I, did I do a motion to open the hearing?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, I just want to make sure. Uh, and we have that here, so do I have any butters that would like to speak on this matter? Okay, when the time comes, I just want to make sure. Go ahead, sir, if you could go ahead and present your, um, proposal and we'll go from there.
Hi, uh, my name's Steve Moss. I have a, uh, small roll-off company. I'm just looking to store, um, some roll-offs and my truck and my property.
Okay. So before we begin, then, if you don't have anything else to add, I'm going to turn it over to your butters. So if any of the butters would like to speak, if you want to come up here, please, you have to give your, uh, name and address and then you can give your comments. And we have a sign-in sheet for you here, if you'd like, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is, uh, Chet Nuleski. I live next to Stephen Moss. This is my wife, darling.
Hi, good evening.
Hi.
And we are opposed to do, having a rubbish business. We're in a beautiful area of Auburn with million-dollar homes. And I, he'll ju-, he'll just destroy the place.
I have, um, I, I, I'm confused about all of this. Um, I have photos, if you want to look to see what type of small dumpsters or small company he has. We've had to look for, look at trash that has been left there for months in these containers. As early as, um, Monday, he had another truck, um, that had, uh, trash in it. I followed up with the town hall, um, when I made the complaint. And I was told that he was to stop his business, that the dumpsters that were full had to be removed and that he was to no longer pull those, um, roll-on dumpsters out of his yard. And, um, he's continuing, he, he's already doing his business. He said he had a permit to do this and he was allowed to do this. We never got any letters stating that his business is now going to be run out of his home. It's a, we've lived here for 40 years. It's a residential area, a beautiful residential area. And it's no place for this business. I can't imagine as we get older, we go to sell our home and somebody looks at it and says, what is that? I say, oh, what do I, what do I tell them? I, I, if you want, I don't know how this goes, if you want to see the pictures of what we look at.
Well, you can certainly give them to the town. I mean, um, if you wanted to submit it to Mr. Fallon, um, you could do that. Could you just, um, I just need your official address for the record also, please. In the microphone, I'm sorry, it's-
422 South Street.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We are the direct, uh, butters. Oh, I'm sorry, we, we are the direct, uh, butters to, um, Mr. Moss.
Okay.
Um, and behind us are our neighbors that are next to us, Mr. and Mrs. Ponte.
Okay, hi, folks, if you just introduce yourself, give us your name and address, please.
Uh, Dominica Conte, 430 South Street. And, uh, we're very angry because we don't want a garbage business rolling all the way down like a, a train track. He has containers, big, huge containers full of stuff, trucks full of stuff, he's going in and out. He bought a house, he didn't buy a commercial business. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Okay.
I don't believe it's a zone for that and that's why we're here, correct?
Right.
That's correct.
Okay, um, are there any questions you'd like to ask us?
Um, well, you know what, I will turn it over to the board, as a matter of fact. Do you have any questions or concerns, um, for the butters?
Uh, not for the butters, Ms. Chairman, thank you.
Where he's storing these, there's a little brook right there within 50 feet. And, uh, a lot of times these containers are full of rubbish.
He built, he, I, I guess the bro-, he already put in, the town, I think it was Tim I spoke to, said that if he were going to store these bins there, it would have to be tarred. But we have before and after pictures. There's a, a brook that goes underneath and he just put that driveway on top of that brook. He buried it. I have, we have pictures of, of the, the rocks and my husband's family owned that property for, for hundreds of years. So he knows the, he knows it inside out. So I guess I'm not sure how he's gotten this far without any permits. I don't.
I, I spoke with the highway department, he's supposed to have a, uh, permit to enter the road. And he didn't. Um, and, and the engineer is going to come out and I'm going to speak with him in a few days.
From the town.
I just have a quick question. Uh, I looked at your pictures, uh, one of them looks like, did you take a video for one of them? I don't know if it's possible, is it possible to just send the video to the board? Is that something that we have the capability of just for the full record or?
I'm sure they could send it to the town, yeah.
Yeah. So it, could you just send the video when you get a chance, if you have it still?
Yeah, yes, it, it was, I was just trying to show that. He was told to stop, but i- i- in the different pictures, you'll see the same time is, is up, up, on. So I, I don't know, I don't really quite understand. We've never done this before, so I don't understand how this is happening after 40 years.
Well, that's what we're here for this evening, ma'am. Well, that's what we're here for this evening, ma'am. We're gonna get to the- figure it out, and then hopefully straighten it out one way or the other. Okay, um... Vice Chairman Aaron, do you-
Hi, sir. I- I don't have any que- I thank you for being here. I don't- I don't have any questions for the abutters, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, one last call. I'm good for the abutters right now.
Yeah, I don't have any questions for the abutters.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, do you wanna speak to the applicant?
Yeah, I think we're all right.
Okay. Go right ahead, sir, yes, please.
Oh, sure.
Give us your name and address.
My name is Anthony Conti, and we have 430 South Street. I understand all this. He's trying to run a little business where, but, you know, far as I understand, and I don't think that, I would say there probably shouldn't even be a question for him to run a business in a residential area. I mean, then someone can go, their track drive, there was a lot of nice houses too, like we have. Houses the same. Our neighborhood is nice also. And you do, you put five, six container, trash container. This is a commercial. This is like a hobby. This is like a casella. It should not be next to- I mean, I- I don't wanna say anything, but would you, one of you guys, would you like have some next to your house with all this trash? And, you know, trash flies all over the place, and it smells, and, you know, animals. I mean, this is, it's kinda insane. I- I understand. I mean, we're living in a beautiful town, and we, you know, we- we pay a lot of money for taxes and stuff, but I don't think somebody should be allowed to store containers, even if it's containers empty, but it still looks like a commercial. It's a- we're not hobby. You know, we are residential people. And a commercial, you wanna run a business, it looks like he's- he's got a big business with a sign on- on the containers, Moss, which is, uh, we should best luck, but it should go in a commercial area. You know, you have to have a place for it. I understand you have a truck or you have a boat, that's okay, but not five, six containers full of trash most of the times.
Anyone else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this matter? Okay, uh, so I'll turn it over to you, Vice Chairman Aaron, if you wanna speak to the applicant.
I- I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the applicant's courtesy of, uh, coming back.
Sure.
But, Mr. Moss, so, um, I- I think I understand the- the goals of what you're proposing. Do- do you have, um, a, what I'll call a storefront or a business location, other than your home currently?
No.
So- so you're- okay, so you don't have a separate location where you have, okay. All right. Um, and how long have you operated this business?
Uh, nine years.
And for nine years. How long have you lived at that residence currently?
Uh, I'd have to say five.
Okay.
Used to have a place in Worcester.
And- and you're asking for a home occupation?
Yes.
Um, have you operated, um, in this fashion all the five years that you've been there?
Yes.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna reserve, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Mr. Garabedian? Hold on. There's no talking in the gallery, please.
Uh, so the one question I have, um, since I'm, I think the other board members are gonna get a lot of my other questions, is, uh, are you also planning on having, uh, like, an office inside your, uh, residence itself, or is it only the storing that you're gonna be doing at your property?
That's it. I- I do have to, I made a mistake. Um, I have not been running the business, like, five years. Um, I recently got kicked out of- not kicked out, um, left the building in Worcester that I was at. So it's probably been two years operating here.
And it's, your full operations is what you're looking for? So your- your storage, your office, everything, or just only the storage?
I don't have an office. I actually have a full-time job. That stuff pretty much just sits there all the time. I'm not in and out all the time. I work a seven-to-three job and a lot more. So it's just looking to keep a couple of dumpsters there. That's all.
All set, Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Roach?
So my question is, so in your brief that you submitted, you say that you own eleven dumpsters.
Do own eleven.
And when I drove by today, I think there was either two or three. So where are the other nine?
They're rented out.
So they're at, like, people's houses who have rented them?
Yes.
Okay, so if the dumpster is not rented, the only, right now, the only place you have to store them
Correct.
is the house?
Correct.
All the rest of the ones that you own are, like, on-site at being rented?
Yes.
And then you pick them up from the site? You bring it where? Like, where do you get rid of it?
Casella.
Okay.
Dump. Um, so like I said, I work seven-to-three. Um, sometime- they close at four, so sometimes it's hard to make it to the dump on time, so it'll stay on the truck, um, and get rid of it the next day. Um, I did have a problem when my truck broke down, and a couple dumpsters did stay on the property full. Um, but the truck's running, and I hope that never happens again.
Um, that's all the questions I have for now.
I mean, they covered all mine, so, um, as they usually do. Um, anything further, Mr. Maron?
No, Ms. Chairman, I'm- I'm just gonna follow up with my earlier question. So you- you had, um, if I understood your- your follow-up comments, you had, um, a- a separate location where you were operating this business?
Yes.
And it sounds like this is a- this is a secondary business for you?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So- so you had a location, you're no longer there.
Correct.
But you own the equipment, so you brought it to your home.
Yes.
You've been doing that for about two years.
About two years, yep.
Thank- thank you very much. Uh, I don't have anything further, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Uh, do I have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
I guess I would just like to say, if the abutters wanna speak again, they certainly can. You can't just yell, just, yes.
You can, yep, please.
Yes, yes.
When he says he has a couple dumpster there, they- they've been there most- most of the time, five, six that I see it. Uh, now, if you have a dumpster that you rent it out, you know, you bring to the job, to a site, and then from the site goes to the dump, you don't bring them to the house, you know, where the people leave, I mean, with, you know, our neighborhood. I mean, you bring them there, and you leave them there, and then you bring them, and you- you just fill them, almost like, this is not, you know, usually, you have a dumpster, you fill it, goes to the site, to the job, and then from there goes to casella, whatever you wanna do. But, you know, it does not help too. It's five or six there. And it's not just storing, you know, there only to- no, that's not true. It's running out of there. I don't know if he has another place, but if he has another place, that he's run out of, why would you have to bring them there? Next to the house. And this was not, when he first bought the house, 'cause we've been there over twenty years, he only, maybe a dumpster, and he told me maybe he was doing some remodeling or some, that's not a problem. He did a lot of renovation or digging, whatever. We- nobody said a word. But this is, is a little too much to leave it right next door with all the dumpster here. I mean, like, uh, you know, Mr., uh, Naleski said, I mean, people buying, he's gonna sell the house someday or whatever. What- what are they gonna say? He says, "What, next to a dumpster?" You know, this is not right, and I don't think any one of you would like to have this type of, uh, business right next to your own house. But that's not true about two dumpsters, five or six there all the time.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, so do I have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
Mr. Chairman, motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Vice Chairman Aaron, any discussion?
Um... Well, I'll- I'll put it out there, Mr. Chairman. I- I, um, I'm- I'm challenged with, this is clearly a gentleman that works extremely hard, um, and has got a side business. Um, but, you know, quite frankly, th- this- this is not the location for this business. We have certainly granted, case-by-case basis, um, home occupations in the past. Um, but one of the things that we do, um, and I think we do respectfully fairly well, is to make sure that, um, it is not a detriment to the neighborhood, um, that it's actually a compliment to the neighborhood. Um, it's not just for the comments of the abutters this evening, um, but it's- it's just the fact that, um, while I- I appreciate, I- I think- I think I can appreciate how hard this gentleman is trying to work, um, this- this is not the place, um, to- to sanction this business. Those are my thoughts, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Garabedian?
Yeah, I echo, uh, Mr. Maron's comments, um, especially with the brook in the back. Um, I think putting a- or letting dumpsters be put there is definitely a public safety hazard. Um, I was trying to see if he also runs his office out of there, so that we could possibly limit it, but where he's only using it as a storage site, I- my position right now is denied.
Ms. Roach?
Yeah, I mean, I am familiar with the property. I, uh, frankly, I've rented a dumpster before from Steve. Um, I- I- I agree with the neighbors that, you know, we- and for us home occupations, and again, like Mr. Maron said, it is case-by-case basis, so we don't blanket it, but they're typically, you know, bakers, or people who, any of the work is being done inside of the house, so that the neighbors do not know about it, that they do not, you know, have anything to do with it. I think if, um, you know, I think if this is a permit to, you know, put up a giant garage and store them in there, I think we have a different application in front of us. Um, but I think out in the open, um, you know, with the neighbors in a- in a residential area, I- I think is a tough sell. I- I truly think this is not really the location for that. It's a very big piece of property. There's certainly some options, you know, down the road, I think, but I think that, for me, it'd have to be inclu- it would have to be in a structure. It'd have to be enclosed. I- I just don't see this being, you know, uh, for the neighbors, I- in this area, I just don't know that this is the right place. Um... And I also think, for us, it's very hard to say, if we said, "Okay, yes, we'll do it, but you can have two." There's no way for us to really police that. We can't, if we have- if we give the permit and we say, "Yes, we'll give it to you, but you can have no more than two", and the neighbors come with photos, and we can say, "Now it's four, now it's five, now it's three, now they're not empty, now they're-" we don't- we don't have a policing power over that. If we did, for me, that might be different as well. Um... There is no question about his work ethic. Um, I commend him for running this business on the side, while he also works a full-time job. But I think it's tough to sell with them being out- out in the open on the- on the property.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I don't wanna- I don't wanna steal anything that you wanted to add.
No, you weren't. I was just gonna say, I don't have anything to add, to tell you the truth.
Very good. No, I would, just in quick follow-up to Ms. Roach's comments, I mean, I- I- I went down the same path of, would there be a palatable, um, solution where we could condition in a certain way? Um, but it's the lack of... The lack of being- being able to police it correctly. Um, and it's one of the reasons why I asked the applicant specifically, is there an alternate location? Um, and is this an overflow location? Um, so do you have a primary location where you could operate from, and this could be an overflow? Because what I was looking for is, is, are there- are there any particular conditions that we might put on it to make it palatable, to make it workable? Um, without an oversized structure to house all of these things out of sight. And- and even with that, you know, while we're just talking openly, even with that, now you have- you have road, um, you had road travel, um, with all of this. That's constant into a residential neighborhood, which- which I would expect that the abutters would oppose as well. I- so I, with that, I mean, I- I don't see, um, I don't see a path to being able to condition it in a way, um, that would win for the abutters, but also win for his business. Um, I don't think that it could be conditioned and controlled. Um, and so I don't- I don't see a path here.
You know, the one thing I will add too, is I think that we've had, um, I think one of our missions is to support businesses in the business district and preserve the integrity of the neighborhoods. And that particular road down there, South Street in that direction, you know, there are some pretty ver- there are some very nice houses down there. Um, they've been under some stress in the past with, um, applicants trying to abut, you know, the car lots, trying to build as far back as they could. Um, you know, that we prevented in the past. But again, I think we have to draw our line somewhere in terms of maintaining the integrity of the neighborhood, so I understand what you're pointing to there. And it- and it's a tou- it's a tough situation, especially now. Um, you know, the economy, the way things, the- the world is in general, I'd love to see, but people be able to make as much money as they can. Um, but I think this is a tough fit, so... Do I have a motion on the 6:15 PM applicant, Steve Moss, requesting a special permit under section 3912 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for a home occupancy at 420 South Street, Auburn, Mass., map 82, parcel 7?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to deny.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Let's do a roll-call vote. Mr. Maron?
Deny.
Mr. Garabedian?
Deny.
Ms. Roach?
Deny.
Yep, I'm gonna vote to deny. Sorry, sir, it's just not gonna fit in that neighborhood.
Right, thank you. Thanks for being here.
Do I have a motion to close at 6:15?
Mr. Chairman, motion to close, 6:15.
Do I have a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, all right. Welcome. We'll let you all clear out for a minute, and then we're gonna get to a final hearing this evening. See, he's already prepared. He's getting set up. He knows the drill already.
Been here a couple times. I don't know what I'm gonna do with my, uh, third Thursdays anymore.
Okay, so as we're letting them clear out, I can do a little bit of preliminary speaking on this matter. So as you recall, um, this is an open hearing. It has been for quite some time now. Um, in fact, it's been going on since 3/20/25, so there is no reason to call it back open again. As you recall also, at the last meeting, we closed public comment. There'll be no public comment this evening. Um, what we're working on fundamentally is, uh, wrapping up the permit itself in terms of, uh, the height changes. Um, all the- the questions that we had in the last couple of meetings, and then hopefully, we are able to, uh, bring this to a vote this evening. That is my goal. So we're gonna kinda put the heavy work in here to try to get this done. So with that being said, sir, I'm gonna turn the floor over to you, and if you'd like to go ahead and just talk about the changes that you've made since the last time?
Yep. I'll go through the changes. Um, I did run some eight-and-a-half by elevens for everybody of all the changes that have been submitted.
Thank you so much.
So we did update the entire packet, what you're getting here. This is, obviously, I'm not, it wasn't all the drainage and all that stuff, that really didn't change from last time. We did update the entire set, but what you just got right now, those are the changes, the- the bigger changes that we've made.
Okay, thank you.
So...
Yeah, you- he can have mine, Mr. Largis. I'll share with Mr. Garabedian.
Yeah, we have plenty.
Sure.
Just a quick question. Uh, are these plans the same as the ones that the town received on June, uh, 12th, or are they different?
No, they're the same.
Okay.
I just took out, I didn't print off the entire set.
Yeah, I know, where's I-
Just the layout plan, the landscape plan, and the architecturals.
I just had it in my packet, so I wasn't sure if it changed, and I should put that one aside or not.
Nope, no, no.
So I actually have it.
Just gave you the Cliff Notes on this one.
All right, if you want somewhere.
Give a shuffle all set. Ready? All right, so the first sheet you have, this is the layout plan, um, the changes that we made to this. Obviously, the biggest one is the building number three went from a four-story to a three-story building. That's really the- the change that was on the layout plan. So the, on the landscape plan, which is the next sheet you have, we added, again, they took off the four-story, made it a three, so that it was all consistent throughout the whole set. We also added shrubbery behind the garages. On the other landscape plan, there was nothing behind the garages. So we had that as a screen for the- for the abutters. So now, really, the whole property line that connects to the abutters is completely screened, coming all the way down the- the community. So the next set, this is the four-story building that we have here. Um, we're showing the- the height to the ceiling of the top floor. So in the plan, in our waiver request, we went to forty-five feet. The measurement from the- from the ground up is forty... Forty-two point eight.
Right.
Um, obviously, we're- we're asking for forty-five because, you know, ground, or depending on exactly where you measure it and whatnot, just to give a little bit of a buffer, is at forty-five. So that's the four-story building. And then building number three is a three-story building, and also the smaller building as well is a three-story building. So that one, the height on that is thirty-one.
Um, so just for the record too, I just wanted to bring Gary in on this, if we could. Uh, there was some previous discussion between myself and Gary before the meeting began, and it was just a little bit of a discrepancy on the top of the ceiling height at the forty-two point eight. But to be clear, I just wanna also point out that whatever we vote on in terms of the restriction would be met. So if we say we agree to the forty-five feet, they'll have to, whatever corrections would stay within the forty-five feet. And again, what I was saying earlier, uh, this is a draft decision. Uh, and the reason why we're referring to it as a draft decision, because let's just hypothetically say we conclude this- this evening, any potential edits would be added into it. Otherwise, this substantially stays the same. The only difference would be, realistically, that they would remove the watermark draft across it, and the settling on the numbers of the units, because we have it always listed as one hundred and twenty, uh, one hundred and fifty-two units. And that's changed with the- with the- with the floor coming off of one of the buildings by sixteen units. So the reason why they haven't edited those final things right now is because of tonight. So it will be available for review and signature, should it go that way. But I just wanna be clear on that. So I'm sorry, Gary, can you just kinda go ahead and we talk about those heights real quick?
Well, the heights, again, these are just, you know, preliminary drawings and that, but if the forty-five foot is your determination that what it's allowed to, the structural drawings when submitted would have to reflect that, and also the as-built, what was done would have to, uh, officially reflect that, and they know that.
Yes, right, they do. Again, this is just documenting.
Right.
Making sure we're all up to speed on those, our conversations here. Okay, um, so with that being said, does anybody have any ques- do you have any questions, Mr. Maron?
I do not, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cussy?
As far as the roof's fine?
Correct. What- what we're reconciling right now is, if we're going back to this, um, comprehensive permit here, is we have to still reconcile the building height and agree to it before we can even complete the permit and then bring it to a vote.
Okay.
So that's what we're doing first, is we're gonna reconcile the building height. And that was the differences of forty-five feet we were agreeing to. And that was the differences of 45 feet we were agreeing to. And as like Gary just mentioned, that's what I wanted to bring him in for, is we're showing it at 42.8 right now, but if you look above the windows where it says top of ceiling, and you see there's another roof line right there, it might change by a foot or two, depending on who's measuring it. So it's not gonna go over the 45 if that's what we agree to, is what the point is.
So this was a waiver, right, that we?
This is a waiver that, that we have to continue on and work through, uh, before we can actually complete the permit and bring it to a vote. Correct. So we have to, we have to resolve this this evening first. Any questions on this side?
I'm all set.
Just making sure. Um, any questions on your side?
No, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay. So with that being said, can I ask for a motion? Are we too early for that for you on this? I'm just making sure that you don't have, okay.
Yeah, no, I don't.
So I just want to make sure I say this correctly then. So we're working on to our waivers that we discussed previously. And can I have, do you have that waiver on this?
I know this is an up-to-date copy of like what we voted on, but yeah.
But we're looking at, right, multifamily.
It's, uh, middle of that first page, I think.
Middle of the first page?
Yeah, right below that 500, I think.
Right, so we're looking at 9.3.6.1 multifamily dwellings in the RA District. A maximum dwelling height is existing of 35 feet. And we are looking for a 10-foot waiver to allow multifamily dwelling height of 45 feet for the, uh, for these buildings. And then the other one, obviously, but the ones that were removed will be shorter. So do I have a motion on the multifamily dwelling 9.3.6.1 maximum height from 25, uh, excuse me, from 35 to 45 feet?
I'll make a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so let's do a roll call vote. Vice Chair, Vice Chair Marin?
I approve.
Mr. Cussy?
Approve.
Uh, Ms. Roach?
I cannot vote.
Oh, that's right, I apologize. Mr. Garabedian?
Approve.
And I vote to approve. The waiver is squared away. So again, I'm glad you brought that up. It's just the four of us here this evening. So Mr. Garabedian and myself, uh, Vice Chair Marin and Mr. Cussy will be the votes. So just to be clear on that.
Thank you.
Um, so we did resolve the waiver. Uh, town side, are we all set with that? Just making sure. We're happy with that particular part of the waiver being completed? I just want to make sure I covered all the language properly.
Yes, thank you. Um, so I have in my notes, um, you still have the, um, uh, the waivers for 9363, 9364.
Oh, right, okay. So 9.3.6.3 multifamily dwellings in the RA District, only one multifamily dwelling structure per lot. Waiver to allow three multifamily dwelling units on the lot. Do I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, point of order, uh, just procedurally, I think for 9364, we'd need to also vacate our previous denial of the waiver.
Ah.
Since we split 2-2 on that vote.
Well, that's great, okay. That's, that's a good point. So we have to, um, since we allowed the height in the different buildings already, we have to vacate the previous one that Mr. Garabedian spoke of and approve that, because we already have three buildings on the lot. So we can't allow the three buildings with the two different heights if we're not gonna allow the multifamily dwelling on the unit anyway.
I don't think for 9363, we had a vote already. It was only the, you can only have eight to 12 units. That one was the one that we voted on.
Which, I'm sorry. So 9364 needs a vote as well?
Yeah.
Correct. Okay. So 9.3.6.3, are we good on that one then? I just want to make sure we're covering all the spaces here.
So.
9363 is the waiver to allow three multifamily dwelling on the lot.
So I, I have in my notes that both of these still have to be voted.
But I think we need to vacate the previous one for one of these only. Since Mr. Marin made a motion to deny, and it split 2-2, uh, for 9364, and I think March or April.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. No, that did, that did occur. I recall that. That's, and I'm glad you paid attention to that. All right, so let's vacate. Do I have a motion? So we have 9.3.6.4 multifamily dwelling in the RA District. No single dwelling structure contains more than 12 apartment units or more than eight attached houses in the RA and RB districts. They want a waiver to allow 64 apartment units and a single dwelling structure in the RA District. So do I have a motion to vacate the previous denial?
Before we move forward, Mr. Chairman, so just to confirm, we asked that this be denied. And then their proposal was to come back and remove 16 apartments.
Correct. They brought, they, what they did was they dropped it down. So the 16 units and the removal of the roof, that top floor, brings them down to what the state and the applicant both agreed to upon is the minimum number of units to make the project viable. They won't remove anymore.
I'll make a motion to vacate previous decision of the chairman.
Okay, do I?
Then we vote again?
We're gonna vote to approve it, correct. Well, we're gonna vote again on it. Whether it approves or not is up to you all, but yes.
Okay.
So do I have a second to vacate the 9.3.6.4 previous denial?
Uh, second.
Okay. Let's roll call vote that. Mr. Marin?
I approve.
Mr. Cussy?
Approve.
Ms. Garabedian?
Approve.
And I approve. So 9.3.6.4 previous denial has been vacated. So now do I have a 9.3.6.4 multifamily dwelling in the RA District? No single dwelling structure contains more than 12 apartment units or more than eight attached houses in the RA, RB districts. Waiver to allow 64 apartment units and a single dwelling structure in the RA District. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, so, uh, Vice Chair Marin?
Approve.
Mr. Garabedian?
Approve.
Uh, Mr. Cussy?
I deny.
Okay, and I vote to approve. So that's still 3 to 1, that approves. Uh, and then we have to do 9.3.6.3 again, just to be safe, because according to the town side, we have not. And I just want to make sure that we're gonna cover it again. Multifamily dwellings in the RA District. Only one multifamily dwelling structure per lot is allowed. We're waiving that to allow for three multifamily dwelling units in the lot. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All right, roll call vote, Vice Chair Marin?
I approve.
Mr. Cussy?
I'll deny.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Garabedian?
Approve.
And I vote to approve. So I believe we have covered all of our waiver issues. Is that correct? I'm just making sure on the town, I'm sorry, I should have said town side, I saw you.
Sorry. Um, so I believe we are square on all of them. And just, um, just to clarify on the, um, uh, wetland protection regulation.
Of that one. I don't think we actually ever waived that one, did we? Or we might have denied it? That one was the one that, uh, yeah. It's the waiver to have us enforce the Wetland Protection Act instead of.
Right.
Yeah. I think that's what the waiver is, right? I don't have the.
No, you're right. That is, that is correct. That is the waiver to allow us to rule over the wetland protection. Correct, that's what I mean.
I say, I think we, I think we pulled, I think we pulled that out.
Okay. Oh, you did remove that one?
Yeah, because we're just gonna go to, we'll, we'll go deal with it at conservation.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Yep.
Town, can you, you want to record that?
Yeah, so that, I just want to, um, uh, the applicant is withdrawing that waiver request.
Correct.
Okay, I just want that for the record.
No, that's perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
And, um, so do we have any others? Are you satisfied that we've completed our waiver list?
I think that will take care of all of them. So we have, um, just to, just to make sure everybody's on the same page. Um, 3911, that was approved on 3/20/25. 6711, that was approved also on 3/20/25. Uh, 9361, that's approved, uh, this evening, 6/26. Uh, 9362, approved on 3, uh, 20/25? I'm sorry, that's either 3/20 or 3/26, whatever the date of the March meeting is. Um, 9363, approved this evening, 6/26. Uh, 9364, you are approving that, 6/26. Uh, stormwater management bylaw, that was also approved in March, the March meeting, 3/20. Um, the stormwater management approved 3/20. And the wetland, uh, regulation waiver, um, the applicant, Mr. Venakasa, is withdrawing that this evening formally. Is that, does that sound correct for?
That sounds correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're on, we're on the records so that we have it recorded for. Okay, thank you.
Both of the, uh, fee waivers we denied as well. The connection, the water connection and the sewer connection fee.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so do we have anything else that you want to go over in terms of the plans?
No, that was, that's really it.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page. Um, do you have any questions, concerns, or topics of the, uh, for the, for the applicant?
I do not. No.
A question, I don't know if it's for the applicant. I remember at some point there was talk of a condition for a donation, I believe, right?
Correct.
Is that in the draft decisions? I haven't found it anywhere.
It is.
It is, yes.
Which number is it, do you know?
So it's a hu, it was a hundred thousand and it was split, um, to be paid upon the occupancy of, of each building. It was a third, a third, a third at each, one at each building.
A suggestion from, uh, a building inspector, they structured that way because it's similar to the way it's structured out for the, um, Auburn Oxford Line project.
Okay.
Which seems to work pretty well.
Yeah, it has worked pretty well.
No, I just remembered at one point it was there and I just hadn't seen it in here, so.
No, I appreciate that, thank you.
Number, um, 3.2.6.2.
6.2.
If we're moving on to the conditions, Mr. Chairman, for discussion, where is it, um, that raises the topic?
Oh, of course.
Access, um, to the lot.
Are you referring to the, um, private way?
I am, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, I can go through that. Sorry. I think I have an old copy of it, too.
During the last meeting, we had a provided letter from the applicant's attorney suggesting that he had access. And we have an opposing letter, um, from a group of abutters. And I thought it was our intent to cover that in a condition. I'm just wondering where that language is.
So there's some language at 3243, if you were working off. I don't know if we're working off, working off the same draft as well.
Right, that draft that you issued today is, is our working functional draft, correct?
I hadn't, I don't think I received that one or I lost it somewhere, so.
Um, I might have a couple more for you here.
I have, I have your copy.
That's okay, I, that's, we came prepared. The town is always, always well-prepared. Here you go.
I got one.
Okay, just in case. So again, I just wanted to make up while you're, while you're talking about or looking through this. Again, just so we're clear, we're gonna remove the draft overlay, the, the watermark. Any changes or conditions or dates that need to be changed, I shouldn't say conditions, I apologize, strike that. But any dates that need to be changed or building heights that we discussed previously this evening? Um, or the number of the units that will change. Otherwise, this will remain the same.
Mr. Marin, did you find it? It's on page nine. It's 3.2.4.1. In case you didn't.
I was reading 4.3, so 4.1, okay.
Yeah, page nine, the one, two, three, four, fifth one from the top.
So I'll actually read it out for the record if you'd like. So 3.2.4.1. The developer must provide in writing how the proposed project will impact the private rights of the abutters on Perry Place, including the issue of potential overburdening of the easement. However, the developer will mitigate the identified impact at their own expense and how it has rights to widen Perry Place, a private way. The town has no authority over the private way. Any improvements to be made to Perry Place must be achieved in accordance with the developer's rights and/or required by law. So that was submitted per the town attorney, um, to make sure that they are required to go and determine what they have for rights over the private way.
Uh, looks like that condition also is kind of copy-pasted in two places. 3.2.4.3 also has some of the same, uh, language in some locations, so.
So I need to defer to those with just a little more understanding of how this is worded here on the board. So Ms. Roach, Mr. Garabedian, how, how do my, how do my, to interpret this? Because when it suggests to me that provide in writing, didn't they do that last time with a, an attorney letter?
They did, so I think this isn't as strong as we would like it to be. I think we'd like this to be worded more.
Absolutely isn't. That's my contention. This absolutely isn't. Respectfully, that draft just suggests that their letter provides in writing that they've got rights to it.
Yeah.
And as we covered during the last meeting, we are not in a position to make that judgment, either way.
Yeah, I think.
They can, they can line up all the attorneys they want to, to state their position, uh, but it doesn't, it doesn't make it factual.
Yeah, I think the strongest language we could do, uh, and I'm just spitballing here, but we could do something with, uh, they either have to record a new easement, uh, with the registry of deeds, which would require them to negotiate with the neighbors and confirm that they have that right, or show us a, um, a judgment from a court. I don't want to foreclose them to have to go to court, so that's why I'm thinking there's a way they could negotiate with the neighbors, in theory. I know the neighbors won't negotiate, but.
And that's what I was looking for.
Yeah.
Because I, you know, I mean, a, a, as you know, I mean, I don't like admitting what I don't know about something. But I don't know how that needs to be worded to articulate exactly what you've just said of where is, you know, who, who gets to adjudicate that, you know, that, those two opposing conditions. Respectfully, Mr. Chairman, I, 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 I understand that that came forward from the town attorney, but this does not have the teeth that I was hoping for.
Right, because we had a, a, a letter from each attorney.
Yes.
One saying no, one saying yes.
Mm-hmm. And with writing language, they've provided us the writing, so that's the problem.
Well, so I'm gonna, again, I'm just asking here, so the developer must address in detail how the proposed project will impact the private rights of the abutters on Perry Place and how the developer has rights to widen Perry Place, a private way.
That's just telling them what to put in a memo to us that we don't have the authority to adjudicate. That's the big problem.
Yeah, I mean, respect, and I, I appreciate your intent, Mr. Chairman, respectfully.
I'm just clear, yeah, now that's what we're here for.
Yeah, respectfully, I mean, I, I read that, and if I'm, if I'm the applicant, I already gave it to you.
Yeah.
So I think, sorry.
So I think what you're looking for is stronger language to, for that.
Yeah, make sure of it.
So again, I want to refer to the memo that we received this evening from the.
Yeah, especially it's copy-pasted twice, so.
Right, and I would say the, 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 the decision from the town attorney is different than what we're reading here.
I'm sorry?
The decision from the town attorney, I believe, is different than what we're reading here.
I agree.
I, I, I was there when we did this and you, and you were there as well. And, and he had it laid out exactly right, and the way he did it, it actually made complete sense and.
What did he say?
So how did? Asking me to remember.
So how did this get?
I remembered that it made sense, but I, I can't.
I mean, I'll just say it in plain speak. The, is, are we, because this, because this is the question that, that came to mind and what I've been thinking about for the past several weeks. Can we condition this to suggest that they have to go to court and get that adjudicated?
Yeah, he had a pathway for them to adjudicate.
Okay, so respectfully, Mr. Chairman, I mean, that in a condition, I can.
And I, and I, that's why when you read that, I'm very surprised. That is not what we had, uh, uh, done. I don't know if we have that anywhere here.
Darlene might have it.
Go ahead, town side. Hi there.
Thank, thank you. Um, so respectfully, um, the town council, um, has obviously provided advisement. Um, the, um, advisement that he sent over was added. If it's not exactly what was transcribed, um, that can be modified in the decision. Uh, what the board, uh, what's before the board tonight is making, um, a decision about the comprehensive permit application that's before you. Um, as, um, as our 40B consultant, Ms. Barrett, has explained, um, to me, um, it's important for the board to make a decision regarding the application. The actual decision and what's written in it, um, can be, can be modified, that you have 40 days for. So that.
I understand that, but I, I'll, I understand that, with, with a great deal of respect. I, I, without a condition that's strongly worded in that, I mean, that, that, that's part of my vote, is how this condition is written, quite frankly.
Understood.
And, 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 and my vote can, I mean, I just, my vote can't be predicated on what this condition could potentially turn into later.
Again, you can condition it. We could, we could, you could state it to make sure that it's changed adequately and you have 40 days. That's what that memo is, I, I showed you at the beginning of the.
Yeah.
Meeting. So you can make your intention clear, we can vote on that, we can agree to it, you can condition it, and we still have 40 days to sign it after the hearing, should we vote on it this evening.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So that is part of that.
I don't, I don't want to stick us here.
No, we're not sticking anybody, and I agree, this is what we're here for. We're, we're representing the community and the interest of the applicant.
Sure.
We need to, we need to vet all these processes, so it's very important that we stay to it.
Yeah, I mean, I, if, and, and, and again, I mean, I, I, this isn't intended to be one-sided in any way. Yeah, I mean, I, if, and, 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 I mean, I, I, this isn't intended to be one-sided in any way. If I'm the applicant, I want that cleared up. And I, and I want to make sure that I can.
Person in legging.
With it completely, um, completely decided in such a way that nothing blows back on me for a multi-cost project. So I, I would be invested in, in clearing that up in such a way. Um, but this doesn't do it.
So you're looking for strongly, what, uh, some more clarifying, clarifying language on um three point two point four point one and three point two point four point three? Agree?
That's correct. Okay, yes.
I, I, I swear I was reading it.
Okay, so yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna make sure that those get edited then. So three, two, four, one, three, two, four, three, need to have some more clarification in the language. Um, are there any other concerns that you want to go through while you're here?
Me?
Yes, please.
So I guess just to that, just, just, I guess that one would be a bigger concern to us as well. I don't want to get into a situation where, you know, maybe a balancing of you guys obviously being satisfied to make sure that we're showing you that we can do what we're doing to the roadway and also not forcing us to, you know, sue all of our, our neighbors immediately, right off the gate, right? So it's, I think that when I was talking to, to our attorney, he's like, the problem would be is obviously if you guys tell me I have to get something from a judge or something, I'm going to immediately have to start suing all the neighbors in order to start doing this, and it's going to be, it, we don't want to do that. Nobody ever wants to do that. And it would just turn into something that really shouldn't. I want to make sure that obviously we have the rights. We're going to be building and investing a significant amount of money there. So obviously, we want to make sure, because if you do give us the permit and the neighbors say that they don't, they're gonna, they're gonna sue us, right? And, and so it would turn into a thing, but I just, I'd prefer not to have something in there that is making it that I literally just have to sue the neighborhood. It's just, it's not in anybody's best interest.
Right, understood.
I love your profession. No disrespect to your professional, but, you know, nobody wants to go into lawyer town. It's, 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 it's a disaster, and I just don't want to get forced into that.
And may I follow up just?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Because I feel like as though I started to storm this nest. Um, I think the applicant's absolutely right. Um, and, and I would like nothing more, believe it or not.
Yeah.
Eliminating that need for both sides. Um, but I would defer to, you know, my legal colleagues. How can this get decided when you have those two opposing opinions? And that's what I want assurance of, is somebody's going to figure that out before he can move forward for, for his own coverage, respectfully, as well as the abutters. I mean, how does that get figured out? Now, I'd love to be able to say that I could decide, because I like being the one making the decisions, but I don't have that kind of authority. Who has the authority? Who, how does that happen?
I'm pretty sure it would only be a judge or some sort of a re- or negotiation with the neighbors uh to get a confirmation and a contract and easements and covenants, pretty much restructuring that private way to confirm that they have the ability to use it in that manner. I think those are the only two ways, Ms. Roach. I, I know you can't participate in this, but would you agree with that?
Yeah, I mean, I can discuss. I just can't, yeah, I just can't vote. Um. Yeah, my understanding of the conversation with town council, and there was other people at this table that was in the room, so if anybody, you know, Gary was there, uh, Darlene was there. Um, my understanding from a conversation with town council was that uh we, obviously as a board, don't get to decide um who has the rights, that, you know, a letter from two lawyers disagreeing doesn't mean anybody has the right and that um the board would be well within their right to say that that matter needs to be either adjudicated or agreed on, which I think we all know is never going to happen, um, before you can pull a building permit if we approve the project. Um, my understanding from our conversations with him is that this is something that has been an issue way back when you guys were before the selectmen, and it hasn't been decided, and here we are at the twelfth hour and it's still a problem. So my understanding from him is we absolutely have the right to condition it based on that. I know that's not what you guys want to hear, but that's, that's the direction that we were told from town council. That's not what we have to do. But our discussion at the last meeting was to talk to town council because we didn't want to condition or do anything that put the town in a position to be sued, saying that we didn't have the right to condition that. In my understanding from Attorney Hannigan is we absolutely have the right to condition that.
That was the answer that I was asking.
That's the answer that you're looking for, that's.
But at the end of the day, one side's got to sue the other. One, one of the other has to.
Well, they have, either that or, or they have to go in front of a judge and let the judge make a decision. It couldn't necessarily be, it could be a hearing. It doesn't necessarily have to be a lawsuit.
Well, you, you have to sue.
You have to file. Yeah, you have to file. Somebody would have to sue somebody, yes.
Burdens on one side or the other.
Correct. And it basically is removing the burden from the town, really, is what it's doing.
Correct, yeah. And let me, let me just ask if I may, um, the, the applicant, because, I mean, in all honesty, he has been nothing but courteous and professional since day one that he's been.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that.
But you, you can, you can understand why we're, we're wanting to have this resolved, right? I mean, I would, I understand your position of make this just go away, you know, and, and hopefully we don't have to go to court, but you, I, I would imagine you can, you can understand why we would want this decided by a, an authority that could actually make that determination legally, that covers both you and the town.
Correct. So obviously, putting myself in your shoes, I get, I get where you're coming from, right? Like, I'd probably be saying, you know, similar to the same thing. And obviously, I'm biased. I'm a little bit on one side, clearly, but I think it's a balancing act of making sure that we do have the rights, obviously, with the, you know, with the banks, everybody that we're going to be working with in order to build this project, we're going to have to be proving this anyway. The, I think the hurdle that I'm going to has, have is if you guys put in the, in their condition and I have to go to the neighbors in order to get this. In all honesty, it's never going to happen. It's like, it's, it's, so what would, the way it will play out is we're just going to have to start spending some money with attorneys and start going after everybody. Everybody's going to have to start lawyering, lawyering up and spending money, and we're going to have to spend a significant amount, and I just don't, I never want to do that. That's never our goal, ever, right? Like, you always try and work everything out. Stephen Venencas is right here, who's a lot more knowledgeable than I am and has probably dealt with more situations than I have, but.
But I'm not an attorney. I'm, I'm just a builder. Um, and so, welcome. I haven't seen you guys since last fall when I went to Florida. But anyway, I think um two of you people said it correctly, that it's, it's going to be um, um, either we're going to work it out with the neighbors or we're going to get a decision from this, the judge, and, and we'll work it out in court. But what my nephew Jim is saying, that if you put it on your condition, then we have to immediately appeal that, otherwise we're, we're stuck between a rock and a hard place. And again, he's saying that sincerely. We don't want to fight with anyone. We're, we're trying to work it out and we, and we do want to work it out with the neighbors, we want to work it out with you, we want to work on the town. But, but if you put that in your condition, that, then we're going to have to appeal that, probably. Now, I'm not the attorney, and we'll have to deal with that. But we'd like you to write the decision that we don't have to start the appeal right away, and we feel confident that we can either work with the neighbors or in the court system to clear it up. So that, that onus is on us, for sure.
Respectfully, if, if you know that you have to work that out and you have to prove that forward, then why you oppose it as a condition if it has to happen?
Again, I, I, I'm not, I'm not saying a hundred percent. We, we have to do one thing or the other. I'm, I'm gonna, we're going to turn it over to council, and we're right in between councils right now, so it's kind of a odd place. My, my attorneys, unfortunately, they're, they're my age and a little older, so they're already retiring, and I've got to bring in a new crew, so, so I don't have all the answers.
Down, my condolences.
Yeah, it is. But anyway, we, we want a decision out of you that we don't have to appeal would be a start, and then we will, and you know, and we've made major um improvements to that road. That I, I can assure you that the project you approve is going to be a class A project. It's going to be the nicest project in town. If you look at the other projects we build, um, we like, we, we take pride in doing a great job. We, we do a good job first and, and then we worry about the business aspect to the, after, that usually comes, but. So we're looking for a decision from you that we don't, that we don't have to appeal right out of the sta- starting gate. That's what we're looking for. We know we have some issues. The neighbors have brought it up, and they're probably, we're going to have to deal with them. We know that. But this is the order that we want to handle this, is first, get all the conditions ironed out with the board, and then we'll take the next step. That's, that's what we propose to do, and I'm sorry if it, you know, it's a little uncomfortable, maybe both ways, but it's just what it is.
One, so. One thing, sorry. Um, I think another thing to keep in mind is the condition, it, it places the burden on who has to start it. Let's face it, if there's no condition in place, the neighbors have the right to sue if they start construction, if they start widening the roads to try to enforce the easement and say they're overburdening of the easement. Putting the condition in place puts the onus on the applicant to begin the process. So it's, it's really just who is going to begin the process of figuring this out, I think, in all honesty.
So I'm just going to say, from the point of view of the town here, we're, I, I would like to suggest that we're going to keep this in here, make the language properly worded according to what the town council believes, and leave it inserted in there. I just, that's, I think it's a protectionary measure for the town. Um, and then again, it becomes whether it's responsibility of the applicant or the homeowners. That's really what it comes down to.
Yes, I, I have a problem putting any of the burden on homeowners.
Well, sure. Right, I understood that.
Yeah.
Uh, but I mean, in terms of the responsibility of the burden, what they mean is like, we're not, we're not making them go do it. It's, we're just saying that the town feels as though you have to resolve the issue of the road. How you go about doing that, but it's got to be a legal decision. Can't be from the opinion of a lawyer. That's not the same thing. It's got to be a legal decision from a, from a.
It has to be binding.
Yeah, it has to be a binding legal decision from a legal authority.
Like Mr. Garavedian said, it's one or the other that has the burden of.
Starting this process.
Wouldn't be right for the neighbors. I mean, they didn't ask for this.
Good point.
I mean, they're likely going to have to hire counsel anyway.
You're right.
Yes.
Yeah, the handle there, I guess.
Just they don't have to file the lawsuit. Their rights are protected without them having to actively do something, I think.
And again, this is all assuming that it's an affirmative vote for the permit in general. If the permit is denied, then they go to the state and ask for whatever they want.
Right.
So our decision tonight is just the overarching approval or disapproval. All the, all the several conditions are going to go ahead and be wrinkled out in the next forty days, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Can be, correct.
Can be, yes, yes.
Up to forty days. I don't think the town necessarily wants to take that full forty days, especially with the fact that, you know, as we know, you're not going to be with us much longer. They want to be able to resolve that before your time expires also. So, you know, we want to make sure that we cover all those bases as well, too. So there's, there's a lot of challenges we're facing here, that's why, too.
Just one, if I may, Mr. Chairman, one procedural question. So is, is the intent, if we move forward with a vote tonight, that this gets signed tonight?
No.
No.
So this would not get signed until this gets locked down?
Correct.
Yes, we have forty days to.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, we have forty days to, to sign that comprehensive permit, should we vote this evening.
I understand.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, any other, okay, so I believe that we've covered everything as far as the town side's concerns. Can I just make sure that we're, have you run your checklist to make sure I've covered all your issues?
Uh, yes, and I just wanted to um, uh, thank you um for the opportunity, but I did go back to my notes um for when we spoke with council and um what's transcribed in that draft, sorry. Um, what's, what's in that draft is what came from council. Now, if there's wording that just needs to be tweaked, you know, legal, um, I'm, I'm going to call it legal jargon. Um, but, uh, yeah, if that needs to be tweaked, that can be handled in that forty days. We have to have a decision signed by the eligible um members of the ZBA. Um, that has to be signed within the forty days to be provided to the applicant. Um, but the important thing that you would have to do tonight um is make a decision to, uh, regarding the application, approve or deny. The draft decision that you have still has to be cleaned up. Like, we have to, we have to do the administrative stuff to, to clean it up, and we can certainly um contact council again if you have, uh, you know, some wording that you want ironed out, that can be done. Um, but that decision, we have, we have a little leeway on. It's just, I did check my notes, and that is what town council had, had sent to us. So, thank you.
Right, so we can condition this tonight before we go.
Yes.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
So I guess the, sorry.
No, that's okay. Go ahead.
So I guess the only thing with that condition that, that I would ask is, obviously, once you, once you speak to town council and everything, please don't put us, word it as though, I'd like to try to not obviously be forced to sue the neighbors and really start a litigation between us. Obviously, you, you're going to make your decision and, and do what you think is best, but when you're speaking to town council, I'd like to try and keep it so that that's not what, the avenue that, that's forced upon us to start having to do that.
I'm sure you could probably word it the way, I, I imagine that he's of a lot of experience and.
Sure, he's done this a couple times.
Probably be able to.
Yeah.
Word it in the professional manner that will make the town's intent known without forcing anybody's hands.
Perfect. I'd appreciate that.
Which I, I think what we're all looking for, I think, right?
Yeah, I'd like to take respectfully the attorney's draft and, and then write it myself.
Okay, um, so we've covered all of our waiver lists. We've discussed anything else. Is there anything else you want to discuss in terms of the application? Anything else? Are we ready to close the public portion of the hearing, really?
I, I, I would give the applicant one additional opportunity to say anything that he wishes, but.
And I agree.
Um, I am ready to close.
This hearing.
Okay.
Um, putting me on the spot, wasn't ready for this, uh, but I, I guess sincerely I would like to say thank you. Obviously, we've been, probably been working together for, feels like close to a year, and you guys have been really great with me and, and really good to work with. Um, the project that we're going to build, like my uncle Steve has said, it's, it's beautiful. You can come to any of our communities, anything, you know, any of our projects that we're working on. We will make you proud, and just like in other communities, we've had a, a board that is, you know, had one or two members that denied us, came to our project after it did get approved, because we still got the votes we needed, and actually came to the project and, and said, I wish I, you know, if I knew it was going to be this nice, I wouldn't have denied you and apologized. So I hope we can do the same with you guys if there is somebody that's going to, you know, vote against it, and once you see the project that we put out, I, I hope that you're proud of, of what we do and is proud of what we do is, you know, I hope you're as proud of what we did as we are of what, what we're doing. So I do hope to make you proud, but.
And if I could to.
That's, that's really it, and, you know, thank you for everything you guys have done. It's been great to work with.
You know, we were in separate meetings outside of this arena, and I think we worked pretty well together. I know you have some other project coming in town.
Yeah.
And I honestly, regardless of the outcome of this, I have no idea how this will go, um, I would absolutely welcome you to negotiate with future projects. Um, I really do believe that you've done a professional and very courteous job.
Thank you.
Done, um, you know, you, you've been open to all the changes, all the, all the things that we've discussed. You've kind of jumped through some hoops for us, too, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
Um, so regardless of the outcome, I would absolutely welcome you back to future projects. I think you've done a fantastic job.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
And I really want to also thank everybody before this goes any further, because I know once we get into this situation, we're not going to have this opportunity, but everybody really worked hard on this, from the board of selectmen, uh, all the way from the beginning, all the way to our board, and the town side especially, has been really tasked with this project. So I want to give a special thank you very much to Darlene Coyle and her Department of Inspection Services. They've done a fantastic job. Um, you know, even up to our new town manager. She's been involved in negotiation with us when she was an assistant town manager and when she was the acting town manager. And so, you know, everybody's been involved with this, and we understand the impact this has on our community, um, and we're obviously going to, you know, take everything into consideration before a decision is made. So with that being said, do you have anything else you want to add?
Yeah, my issue was just, and it's been since the beginning, it's the location of this and the neighborhood with the traffic. I know you're going to do a great job. I've seen you work. I mean, it's excellent. The location of this one is just, I, you know, it's, it's a tough one to swallow, and the traffic going out through that neighborhood, and, you know, the houses are ten feet off the road. I'm just, if some, a kid was to get run over or somebody dies in an intersection, um, my name's on saying that it was like, okay to do this, uh, I would have an issue with it. That's, that's mine.
Go ahead, you want to go up to the microphone?
You got to come up, yeah.
With all respect to you, sir, I know you, you guys are doing the best, the best that you can out of your heart. I know that. Um, the opposition that we get from, and, and they say every single project we propose, every single one, they say those exact words, this is a great project, we just don't want it in our neighborhood. We hear that over and over and over. But at, at the end of the day, it's a residential project in a residential neighborhood, and, and we have, I don't know how many people are going to live here, a hundred, what's, what's unit count now, one?
One thirty-six.
Hundred thirty-six people are going to love it. They're going to love it, because it is a nice neighborhood, because that's the only place we want to build, is in nice neighborhoods, right? And, and we feel like in every case that we've, that we've improved the neighborhood, and some people would say, uh, yeah, you, you raised my values and I, now I have to pay more taxes. So no matter how we play it out, um, we're the villain, un- unfortunately, but the people that live in our communities, they love it. And so. And so, we know it's a quiet, dead-end street, and it will be a quiet, dead-end street. Not the same, the character will change. We're gonna make it much nicer for everyone, the road surface, because we didn't push back and say, "Oh, it's already a road, we already have access, we don't wanna do a thing, we'll plow it," but we're not, you know, we didn't take that attitude. We made whatever improvements we could make within the right of way. But, and I understand where you're coming from, but they say that in every, your comments are the same comments that we hear every single project we built, every single one.
If this wasn't a 40B, there would be 12 apartments allowed on that lot.
And because it's a 40B, that's how you get affordable housing, and that's what the problem is in the state.
I don't understand as affordable housing. The rents they get, I just...
It's affordable Class A housing, so what it does, more housing makes more space for more people down the line. Everybody moves up a notch, is what happens. So yeah, it's not, you know, and there are avenues where people can get it moved, there are other government programs where people can move into something that's $2,000 a month, and then they get a government stipend that comes in pay, because I can tell you, there's not high margins. The cost of construction and the building materials, and it's astronomical. So all that comes up that, there's a tight margin on all these projects here, that's how it's designed. That's what the 40B process is. I don't know if you guys know that, we're limited by law to earn less than 10%, and if we earn more than that, it gets kicked back to you. I can tell you, we don't come close to the 10%, so it's not even an issue. So it's not all it appears to be from the outside, but I just had to speak to that. When you say, "It's a great project, just not in this neighborhood," we hear that every single time, sir. Every single...
That road is tight, you know, no sidewalks, all the cars flying in and out of there, you know, it's a tough spot.
I'd really like to get your vote. I don't think, I don't know.
That's, I'm just speaking from my opinion here, so.
I think we've covered it. I think it's time for the board to...
Yeah, I agree.
To have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
I agree, but I'd be amiss if I didn't offer my appreciation. I mean, look, these gentlemen are what I consider to be, you know, extremely courteous, worthy adversaries, right? I mean, negotiating with you in business is what you hope for, right? You can keep it respectful. I've always admired, you know, what you're doing and why you're doing it. You know, my colleague, of course, is right. You may hear this all the time, but this particular road, wrong place. Not because it's in my town, not because it's, "We don't want it here," because this is a tough location. But having said that, you're really, I must say, you're really very respectful, worthy adversaries. And if I had to be challenged by anyone, I would just, I'd pick you to argue with all day long.
Thank you so much.
Because I'll learn something, and sometimes I'll win a little, and sometimes you'll win a little.
I'm learning, I'm under Steve's wing, so I'm learning, and I appreciate the education.
I'm really, and you've got the right front man for the business, I'll tell you, because he's, you know, I mean, obviously extremely professional, but this is how business should be conducted. You can certainly disagree on topics, but walk away with a great deal of respect because of the way you've conducted yourself.
Absolutely.
So thank you for treating the board with such respect.
Thank you for being back.
And I hope that it was mutual.
It was, 100%.
At times, it probably didn't feel like it, because we take it personal, because it is our town, but I do appreciate that you, I have searched it. You make a good product.
Thank you.
And so I can understand why you'd be proud of that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, so I have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
One of order?
There is no point of order, we've already done no public comments.
You just said five minutes ago you were gonna let us have one more part.
I never said that. I was gonna have these have one more. We're not gonna let the, there was no public comment, it was closed at the last hearing.
Yeah.
My apologies.
So I just wanna make sure now, so public portion of the hearing?
Mr. Chairman, motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Vice Chair Maron?
I approve.
Mr. Cussy?
Approve.
Mr. Garabedian?
Approve.
And I approve. So with that being said, do I have a motion? Now, I just wanna be clear also, I just, because we only have four people here this evening, and the way the vote could possibly go, if we get a second, or if we need a second, I'm gonna reserve the right to provide the second for the vote, but I'm gonna reserve my vote, right? Does that make sense?
You can second the motion, but not give a vote.
Correct, so I'm gonna second the motion, but my vote will remain separate. I just wanna be clear on that for the record. And I'm also gonna give, regardless of how anybody votes, we're not here for that, I'm gonna give each member an opportunity to discuss briefly why afterwards. So if there is an appeal process, or if it's a victory, whichever it might be, you'll have something to stand on, regardless, okay? So with that being said, do I have a motion? Let me get my paperwork out here. Do I have a motion on the application for 16 Perry Place LLC requesting a comprehensive permit under Mass. General Law Chapter 40B for a housing complex at 16 Perry Place, Auburn, Massachusetts, map 18, parcel 14 and 15? For the record, this has been continued from 3/2025. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve as stated, with conditions to be clarified within the next 40 days.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, roll call vote. Vice Chair Maron?
I approve as stated.
Mr. Cussy?
I'll approve as stated.
Mr. Garabedian?
Approve as stated.
I approve as stated.
Thank you, Board.
Good luck.
Thank you, I appreciate it, thank you very much. We'll make you proud, we really will. You'll be proud of this project.
We're looking forward to it.
Yeah.
And we're also hopeful that any future projects that you'll be able to come back through this process with us.
Yes, we will.
So for the benefit of the neighbors, so.
Yes, 100%.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate it, thank you so much, Board. Thank you.
Okay, so is there any comments? I did reserve the right to say that if we had any comments, I quite honestly, I expected them to go the other way, which is great, but do you have any other comments, concerns, or anything that you'd like to add?
He's gonna get clarification on the road.
Correct. Okay.
The one thing I'll say, Mr. Chairman, sorry, I definitely see all the concerns. I see the public safety concerns, I see everything. I just don't think we are at a point where we can't condition, like, they were conditionable around it.
Sure.
And that's pretty much the 40B standard, is if you can't condition around it, then the local issue outweighs the state need, since we're under the 10% cap, so.
No, it makes sense. Hey, can I tell you, my vote was literally up to the last second, and I really do mean that, but it was the fact that my fellow board members who were completely against it the whole time suddenly surprised me by agreeing to it, and the fact that the abutters are gonna benefit more, because all they're gonna do is go through the appeal process and get to build whatever they wanted. It's 21-day appeal process, it's not two years in court. So I think, to me, the abutters are gonna end up with this project one way or the other, and we got them the best deal we could get.
And for what it's worth, Mr. Chairman, so, look, we all have, but I have struggled with this and thought about the vote often, and so given that you're open it, I'll be happy to go on public record and stating, up until tonight, I mean, there was a hinge pin for me. A balanced risk, I do it as a pro living, the risk for me was, what's more palatable? Putting, and what the risk tolerance level is. Is it riskier to send it back with a full denial? And essentially, you know, unharnessing any restrictions that we could potentially negotiate, or to try to negotiate in good faith, recognizing that what goes there, we had a say. And so, you know, I think that was a lesser risk. That's a substantial consideration. The condition has to be in there, and, you know, and they have to prove it either way. But it needs to have the right amount of teeth. But for me, I mean, I was all but a denial, but what was impalatable to me is that denial with the risk that that comes with, that it goes back to the state for everything that a 40B is. If it goes back to the state and gets, and our decision gets overturned, we lose twice, because we lose in trying to do what's right for this neighborhood, and what we've saddled them with is an unconditioned project that goes in without restrictions, and that I couldn't live with. And there may be neighbors that won't understand that, but that's what my position was.
Mr. Cussy?
I agree, I just, with the vote, we have to wait on the road decision and let a judge decide what the outcome is.
I was honestly surprised at your vote, and I mean that in a very complimentary way. You were very against this project right from the, up to the end, and for you, the change means you have a very good, open mind, I really much appreciate it.
Yeah, so that's the...
And you as well.
Yeah, no, I was, and I was in, true, and to be blunt, Mr. Chairman, I was in a... If I came away without the knowledge from my esteemed colleagues that we couldn't condition that in such a way that had the teeth, that I was comfortable with, then I was willing to take the risk and send it to the state and just vote my conscience and let it fall. But because I feel as though we can contain, you know, that portion of it, so prove that you can access the road.
Correct.
And prove that you can, and do that in such a way that works with the neighbors, hopefully that's a palatable outcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for giving us the chance to talk about it.
I wanna spend a minute and just say thank you very much, being a mom, a homeowner, a business owner, a wife, busy, 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 and you've been at every meeting that I've been at, this town hall, and I really genuinely appreciate your legal lease and basically being my knowledge bank available to me at all times. Very much appreciate that.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I couldn't vote, so I do wanna say, I know it's shocking to everyone, but I would have denied. I agree with everyone's position on that. I would have conditioned my denial on safety, because I really think they have a problem over there with the traffic pattern. I think the traffic pattern was shit. That thing was the worst thing I've ever seen in my life. However, I fully believe that Mr. Garabedian is correct when he says that the, because we don't have a certified housing plan and because we don't get to our 10%, I think if we denied, I think they go to the state, I think they do very likely get their permit, and then we have none of the stuff that we have negotiated, that we have no shrubbery, we have no, we have all four, everybody has four floors on buildings, and then the burden does shift to the neighbors to institute a lawsuit. That, once the town, once the state says to the town, they're ready, then Mr. Allard has no choice but to issue a building permit, and then I think the burden does shift to the neighbors to sue. Respectfully for me, I was fine with that, because I just don't like the cars and the roads and all the things, so I would have been a denial. It obviously wouldn't have mattered tonight, because they still had enough votes to go forward without me. But I think that because the town is in the position that we are in with the percentages that we are and the need for housing right now, and the way that that outweighs a lot of the concerns, I think we probably were, would be overturned at a state level, and now I think it does put some burden on the applicant to do frankly what he should have done two years ago. This has been raised for a very long time, and he should have gone to seek some declaratory judgment, or he should have gone to get something to prove that he has the rights to that, and he should have done that literally two years ago, and then he'd be done right now, and they didn't. So now they're gonna have the burden of doing that, figure out how they have access to that. But I think, I just wanna say to the whole board, this has been a very, very long project that we have all spent a lot of time on. We do not take that lightly, and we're in a very tough position up here as volunteers without the knowledge. I've been a lawyer for 25 years, and I still do not know a lot about this, and I, this has been a really tough hearing for us, I think. So I just wanna commend everybody for hanging in there, especially Ryan, who's been trying to retire. Yeah, Ryan's retiring. So yeah, that's it, just wanted to get, even though I couldn't vote, wanted to get my comments out.
Absolutely. And Ryan, thank you for hanging with us.
Of course.
For the record, Ryan's last meeting was probably gonna be two months ago, but we had to talk. Thank you very much, otherwise it wouldn't have happened.
And I'll be on, I'll be on until we're done signing everything, so.
Yes.
Yep.
Um, wanna add?
I've said my five cents.
So, but we have to keep going here, because I still have other meeting stuff in this decision. Hang on. One second, I have other stuff I gotta do, and then you can talk. Okay, so we have decisions tonight from the town clerk. We have to sign the Dennis and Barbara Walsh for 605, we're gonna have that one ready to go?
Yep, I have all of them.
See that? You're the best, Tom, thank you.
All organized.
Um, Planet Fitness Special Permit, they're signed, they wanna get that going, so we're gonna need to get that one signed. We have the minutes from 4/17/25. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes as submitted for 4/17/25?
Mr. Chairman, motion to accept the minutes from 4/17/25 is written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Hearing on scene, no.
I have all of them.
We have no new business unforeseen by the chair, however, what I will say is that, sadly, Mr. Chacolo has decided that he is not gonna re-up, and he has decided that he will retire, and I just wanna say that I am incredibly grateful for his time on the board. Mr. Chacolo took it upon himself to be a local expert in variances, and it was very helpful over the years. He's always offered a very fair and equitable opinion as a business owner and a homeowner, and just an absolute consummate professional. So I just wanna really, Mr. Chacolo, on behalf of myself and the board, I'm sure, but I just wanna say thank you so much for your service to the community, I very much appreciate you.
Here, here.
Thank you, Larry.
Indeed, thank you, Larry. Here, here.
Our next meeting is 7/17/25, and we have two openings, by the way, so we'll have to fill Ryan Garabedian's position, and we're gonna have, Ms. Bush has been voted in favor of by the selectman to come up to a full voting position, so she will be backfilling Mr. Chacolo's spot. So we'll have two alternates. If anybody's interested in becoming an alternate for the zoning board, go ahead and submit your information to the town manager's office, and the selectmen actually make that decision. So thank you very much. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, no, I apologize, we have somebody that would like to speak, go right ahead, sir.
While he's coming up, Mr. Chairman, if I may, are we signing decisions this evening?
Yes, three decisions and a waiver to sign tonight, by the board members.
Yes, sir.
Board, I wanna thank you very, very much. I would not wanna be in your seats. I think you did a fantastic job. I can't say enough, I understand the burden that's been on you, and thank you. And if you could clarify that one last vote, could I get the wordage on that?
The wordage, the wordage, what do you mean?
So we didn't get to see the wordage on your last, on the last conditions on that.
Well, because they're gonna have to get rewritten, and that's why we have 40 days for the decision to be written.
Okay, so your vote and your determination was for...
Approval of the permit.
Correct.
And that's why I mentioned it a couple times during the hearing, what will happen is, the town is gonna spend the next few days to a week, or maybe a little bit more, or maybe a little bit more, trying to get the details back in to the permit that we talked about. The numbers are gonna change, because the draft that we have this evening has 152 units. So, that's obviously gonna drop down, because they took the 16 off the top. Then there's some dates that gotta change.
Correct, but the burden of the road, we're, we're all set to go to court.
Well, I would, you were all set to go to
The neighbors are set to go to court with him to, for the burden, that's what I was
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
You may.
So, you could, Ms. Ludges, you could certainly opt to do that. Our intention, in the way we intend to have the condition worded
Correct.
is to put the first move and the burden on the applicant to prove that. And so
So, he has to go to court?
Well, so, so that he has to prove it through either a court or negotiating directly with you and your neighbors. And so, it puts the burden on him. My intent is, in that language, and you saw my comments this evening
Well, that's why I was wondering if we could get a copy of that.
Yeah, well, when, when it's not published yet. It's quite frankly, in draft, and we'll be modifying the draft within, early in 40 days. My suggestion is this, just from, from one neighbor to another. You may wanna hold off, because it's his move to go after that
Well, that's why I was asking, sir.
So, you may wanna hold off, because the burden is gonna be on him to take that action. I'm not suggesting that you won't have to take legal action at some point in time, or be compelled to do so. But our intent was to put the burden of that proof on him.
Okay.
Not on you to challenge it.
Right, so, so that, that's what I wanted to clarify, sir.
And that's why, and, and as you heard my comments, and I was keeping everyone here to, to wade through it, but because what I was unsatisfied with is the current draft of it doesn't have enough teeth. Doesn't say how he's gonna have that adjudicated. But I validated that that is, that is the type of language that we are authorized to put in there. And my intent is to make sure before I sign it, that that's exactly as strongly worded, puts the burden on him. So, in short, I would hold off on spending any money and, and, and going forward with that action.
Oh, we, we weren't going
In a position that you feel you have to, because he has to do it now.
Okay, so that's, that's what I wanted the clarification for, and I thank you very much for that.
Yeah, he has to approach you either, like, I think as Ryan clearly said, he, he has to either approach you and negotiate to say, "Will you accept my changes of the road?" And whether it be a financial or an agreement or whatever it be, that's again, a separate from the town. Or he can sue you. So, I think he's gonna very likely try to approach you first.
May, may I ask one more question?
Yeah.
Well, it wasn't so much the word, the overburden of the, the, the back lot is deeded for a whole nother street. And that's what the, the question
Again, that's what we can't
The attorney had said, that's why I was asking.
So, our problem is, as a board, we don't have the authority to decide between two legal memos.
Correct.
We can take a look at a judgment from a judge that says yes or no to the easement for this lot,[1684.81]